We found is we were working through what to talk about is that it was going to require more time and so we deferred to having a bigger conversation in June just so we could really think about some of the bigger changes that might be too much to add on to our full day. But some of the high level things that we certainly want to pay attention to and we can give some update on is that, you know, an overall concern on timeliness in terms of our agendas, making sure we're sticking to the timeframe. They are long days and I know Zoom sometimes makes it more difficult. So we really need to be, have a really good effort of paying attention to the time. And I know it's nice to get together and have a chance to talk, but we also want to make sure we're moving the work and that those are at the end of the agenda, aren't feeling sort of left behind or overlooked. We're often having to sort of kick that off. The other thing is certainly attendance. We need to know when you can't be here and we need to know when you leave early and we can't find out the day of the meeting. So it's important to make sure this is a priority. This is important work. We need everyone here to have your voice to be part of this decision-making process. So just a reminder of letting us know those things in advance. We are currently down the board members. So that's something we have to pay attention to and I'll give an update on that later. But I think that's another reason why we need to make sure we always have everybody here. Some of the things then are some of the changes we've already made to help make the process a little bit better. And I don't know if Shan, do you want to talk about that or do you want me to just sort of keep going?
You're doing fabulous.
Okay. So we have kind of modified the agenda a little bit for certain items that we knew probably needed more of our fresh attendance and things that we wanted to make sure didn't get overlooked. So we've shifted the agenda. We've also revisited some items that we look at monthly and do they always have to be on there? So there's some things we always have to do at certain months at certain timelines. But there's some things doesn't have to be recorded on every month. So I think we were very purposeful in how we shifted some of the agenda items, not with any intent to put someone last, but knowing that if we did get in a situation where somebody could be pushed on, some things made more sense than others. We certainly have to be mindful of our outside groups who are here to attend and their time. And so that's another reason why we really want to make sure the agenda is set up to help our interaction with them be successful as well.
All right.
Some of this stuff, do we want to talk about with the
Oh, thank you.
The work session on some of those things? I'm not sure if that's
Yeah. So I mean, I think some of the, some of the feedback that we have received in regards to just the topics for work sessions, whether or not we need to have work sessions at the beginning of each state board meeting, the frequency of meetings, whether or not we needed to continue to have, what do we have now, six a year? Is that right?
Seven.
Seven, six, seven a year? Whether or not, you know, it would be in our best interest to have an additional meeting during the year in order to get to all the agenda items or even a less, no, I think we probably have to stay with the max of the number of meetings. And then just discuss a little bit about the Zoom option and how it is difficult, I think, when you're available by Zoom for the meetings that it does make it for a really long day when you are starting at eight, nine o'clock in the morning and getting done late in the afternoon. So what we wanted to do for today's informational session is just basically let board members know that we did take all of that information that you had provided and compiled it for Brooke and Betty. And then I think because of the amount of information that we got in the varied topics, thought that it would be a good conversation to have during the June retreat. So Brooke, I'm not sure if there's anything that you want to add to that, if you want to get any kind of other feedback from board members or how you want to approach that.
Yeah. So if anyone has any questions or anything or any comments, you can certainly take those. If you have any ideas of, so like Shan said, this is something that we thought would be a good thing to delve into a little bit deeper at the retreat. We thought this would be a topic to discuss and we'd have more time there instead of having a work session for an hour to kind of try to solve all these issues. So if anyone has any ideas or anything, I'd be open to hearing them now, but just knowing that they would be, they would kind of delve deeper. You know, John emailed me an idea that he had. So I thought that that was, you know, so if you want to email me any ideas that you have or anything, I think that we can put those on the agenda to have at the retreat. So.
And do you want to share that? I'm not sure if the whole group got that.
No, you didn't. Yeah. So you actually want to share that?
No, I just shared it with Anne and Brooke that, you know, we have our goals and our priorities, but we really don't have much as far as action steps or tasks to make those come alive. And just looking at what our guiding principles are and our goals, it'd be nice to, to kind of outline and give us some specific direction and maybe all this may be a little bit more accountable as far as if we say these things are important, then what are we doing to accomplish those? So that's what I had emailed Anne and Brooke about. The other thing I would add at this time, since it's brought up, I feel kind of bad. It seems like when we get to the end of the agenda, we're just kind of running people through so quickly that I don't think we, I think we should give people more credence as far as what they have to say and what they have to report. And if that means another meeting or two during the year, I'm all for that. I'd rather do a quality job as best we can and give those people the credence they deserve when they come on the state board.
And what I would add to John's original point is that I wore the wrong mask today. You know, you have some of those that they keep falling down and sucking into your mouth. So anyway, I wore the wrong mask today. But we used to have a strategic plan that was reviewed every five years and then we actually did priorities and goals annually. And so we kind of ended up meshing all of that together, I want to say a year or two ago. And so that is probably a good topic to review again at the retreat as to should we go back to doing the five-year strategic plan, which actually lists steps and, you know, how are we going to do it? How are we going to get there and have all of that? See whether or not you need to do it every five years and then just do the renewal of goals and priorities each year.
And then too, you know, you, every agenda, we should be able to show what part of this agenda is lining to those, those actions.
Correct.
Whether it's one of them or something, but it's that connection that I think is, would be really valuable as we figure out how our work shows that we do prioritize these things. We are doing something about that.
And actually, that's what Jody matches it to with the cover sheet is whatever is being presented here needs to match to one of your goals and your priorities with the exception of Thomas's work.
And I think going back to the, you know, we set the agenda, we designate timeframes for people to talk and we never like to cut anybody off because we want to make sure we can hear what they say. But maybe as we invite people to the agenda, we do a better job of really saying, you have this much time. Prepare your remarks for this much time so that they know, you know, if they know they need to say something, they're sort of prepped so we can really feel that. We ensure that they get to be heard, but also ensure that the next group gets to be heard. So maybe in our messaging, we could do a little better job as we invite them to the table also. There are all things we can get better back. And I think we're all, you know, adjusting to the Zoom thing as well. You know, that creates a different nuance. It's, there's a lot of value to it. There's some challenges to it. So we have to think about what we want that to look like going forward. And we also thought by June, we might have a better sense of what in person would look like versus now. I don't think we can really change much now until we have a better idea of what it's going to look like going forward. And then maybe we can have more intentional conversation of what Zoom will look like as part of our meetings and what we expect as board of our membership and our, our actions. Thomas put his hand up there.
Just a brief comment about making sure that DE staff know the time allotted to their subject, to their agenda item. I think we need to do also a better job of all making sure that they have awareness that the board's going to ask questions. So if you get 20 minutes, doesn't mean you get 20 minutes of slides. Be prepared for questions and dialogue and interaction and be prepared to prioritize and cut things shorter, accelerate through them. Just because you prepared 20 minutes of slides doesn't mean you're going to get 20 minutes of uninterrupted talking. Because hopefully your stuff is good. There will be questions and dialogue. But I think sometimes our folks feel you've got to, I've got 32 slides and I'm going to run through all 32 slides.
Brian, Brian's got his hand up.
Yes, thank you. So I, I agree. I'm okay with an additional meeting or two. I feel bad sometimes when it's two o'clock and we're trying to catch up to the clock as, as much as anything else we're doing. Because, you know, everything is important, but I like maybe the shift of some things to the beginning. But is it, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm still new, but could we get the agenda just a bit earlier? I mean, I think part of a, there's a, you know, there's a, this is a lot of stuff to read and, and I do my best to read everything. But I'll be honest, sometimes I'm going through some of these things pretty fast. And I think if we can maybe get it a bit earlier, then we could spend more time and then maybe we wouldn't be asking questions that are already answered in the materials. Not that there's anything wrong with all questions. I get that. But we might make it easier on the presenter then to hit the high points instead of kind of reading the whole thing to us at the, at the meeting. That might be more efficient. I don't know. I don't know what others think, but I, if, even if it was a matter of, you know, another five days instead of like, you know, the Friday before, now it would be maybe, is it possible to be 10 days, 14 days before the meeting without, without negatively impacting what has to be done at the meeting? I get that sometimes. I mean, there's, there's deadlines and there's lead time and all that. But I'm just suggesting that that might be helpful because, you know, we have a lot, a lot to read and a lot to do and be prepared for. And, and I'm just asking if it's possible to give us a little more pre-meeting time to do that. That might, in other words, that might make the meeting more efficient.
One thing we did, sometimes it depends on some of the information is constrained by time for us to even get it to you. So some of it, we couldn't even, we wouldn't have that far in advance.
Right.
But is there openness to having sort of a, and maybe we need to talk about this with Thomas. You know, at the BOE, we used to have kind of a rolling agenda. We would send some of the items earlier as we had them, another batch as we got them. So it did not come at once, but what was prepared, we could get to a little bit earlier. And some of the stuff that we couldn't get to you sooner came a little bit later. I mean, is that, does that help prepare and address some of those concerns? And is that sort of allowed? I'm not sure. I mean, that work was a little bit different because of the, it was all sort of confidential work. But I think we could do something similar here to help balance that out. I mean, is that, would you be open to that approach? We look at that?
I think that would be helpful if we could get some stuff, you know, even some stuff a little bit earlier and then you could kind of read it in chunks, you know? So, yeah.
Okay.
Instead of having it all at once. Yeah.
I mean, we got, we got some things yesterday and fortunately they're pretty simple to, they're not huge. So you can read that. But, and I understand there's going to be those kind of time things. But if there's anything that's, you know, sort of already prepared two weeks ago, I don't know why we can't see it. That's my question. I, I don't want to disrupt the department's flow. I don't want to violate any laws. I don't want to jump the gun. I'm just saying if there's a way to see some of this voluminous material a few days earlier, if the board is well-prepared, then I think that helps a meeting be more efficient. That, that's really all I'm saying.
Yep. We can absolutely look at what we can, how we can balance that out. Absolutely.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments or ideas? Remember, you can always email me after if you think of something, you know, before the retreat as well.
One of the
Oh, go ahead, Betty.
Brooke, this is Betty. One of the things that we've talked about using this work time for these work sessions is for some professional development for us. And I don't know that we've actually ever done very much of that and it wouldn't need to be every meeting, I wouldn't think. But it seems like there is board development, there are board development activities that maybe we could do during the work session at some of the meetings. Yeah. And we, that was another thing we talked about, you know, if you, you know, if you maybe alternated how often the work, these work sessions were on, on an agenda that maybe was a shorter day, then could you spend some more time working on that? You know, is it, is it best at the beginning of the day? Would it be better at the end of the day? Would it be better if we started earlier? The idea is every time we add something, it makes the day longer. And so we want to ensure that it's adding value to the time that we have together. And if every meeting we're making longer, you know, does that benefit our work? But I think we're not doing enough of any of that. So, so when would we want it? Where would it fit best in at the agenda? I don't think we're bound by any specific time slots. So as we talk about how we want to shift things, would it make somewhere, sense somewhere else? Would that make sense for our, our lunch time? You know, when we're eating lunch? Is that when we do our work session? So we're not, we're more be involved in conversation than a presentation. I think it's sometimes, I feel disrespectful if we're eating and someone's trying to present to us, but I think a work session makes more sense. So maybe we move it to the middle of the meeting if that's allowed. I mean, things like that, how we can make more efficient use of our time. And then maybe that's a rejuvenating piece for us in the middle of the day before we move on the afternoon. Something like that.
I think that the work sessions are definitely something that we should keep. I don't think moving, like lessening the number of them would be very beneficial for the board because I think they provide some really important information that we can use, like when you guys are all making decisions and voting. And I think maybe having more dialogue included in them and having them more conversation-based. So bringing in either groups of people from the Department of Ed or groups of superintendents or groups of teachers even, or groups of students. I think that having more interaction with other groups of educators across Iowa and students across Iowa and having it more dialogue-based would be more beneficial to see what actual issues are happening in the education system right now. Because I feel like that's one of the things that, like, all of this work that we're doing is really important, but sometimes it doesn't feel like the most timely. So I know that like ISASPs are concerned for a lot of schools and students and administrators right now. And I don't, like, we don't have room for discussions about issues that are really timely right now. And I feel like we could have some similar.
Like I, I just like that, yeah. And then we have superintendents and different groups come in and talk to us about what's going on.
Because I think they all have something to say. So.
And Brooke, I don't know if you want to describe to some of the members who have not experienced a retreat, actually kind of what that retreat looks like and what kind of gets accomplished and the structure of the retreat. I think we have quite a few members that have probably not attended a retreat yet.
So, yeah, we had a retreat, I think in June, but it was not really a retreat. So it wasn't, you know, so yeah. So I don't, I don't really know if you can call it like a retreat, but typically it's about a day and a half and we all meet on the first day. And we typically go over our, and that's kind of when we would do, in the past, we did our strategic plan and our goals. And so we did that, I think every, should you say every five years we did that strategic, strategic plan? And then we
Strategic plan every five, yeah.
And then we've been going over our goals and our priorities and kind of seeing where we are and if goals need to change and if, if action steps need to change for the next year is kind of what we do. And then a lot of times we have a group come in and talk to us. Like we had Core come in and talk to us about diversity and the domain public school system. And then we had, his name is, it's giving me, you and I professor taught anthropology, Mark something?
Mark Gray.
Thank you. Mark Gray come and talk to us about the changing demographics in Iowa. So he's come, I think, twice. And that's a really interesting kind of discussion he has and just how demographics are changing, how school systems are changing, you know, populations are changing, rural and urban. So we've had him come in and talk twice. So we usually do kind of that to kind of kick off our day and then we kind of get into more of our goals and priorities. But I also think that this is a great time to kind of do professional development as well. I think that the retreat is a great time to have maybe someone from NASC come in and do professional development. We can have someone come in and if we want to focus on things like early childhood education or diversity inclusion, something like that, we can have someone from NASC come in and do something for us too. I mean, as part of our member services, you know, to provide us with stuff. So I think that would be great as well. And yeah, I think that, I like the idea of kind of delving deeper into our goals and priorities and kind of making sure we're taking action steps and maybe laying out a plan of like, you know, maybe, and maybe that's something that we don't just do annually. Maybe that's something that we need to do, like checkpoints and, you know, every couple of meetings, just to make sure that, and where are we kind of achieving these goals? I think that's great. So I think that's a great discussion to have at the retreat. But yeah, that's normally what we would do. And then the second day, we, in the morning, we'd normally have a, a brief, like maybe a few hours, and then we would finish up anything from the previous day. So, so it's normally a day and a half. And we would also go out to dinner and have fun.
Back in the day. I guess we can call it that now, huh?
Yeah. It's really, so.
So I'm going to interject for a second, just since we're starting the day off. On our agenda, we have this session from nine to nine twenty. Now it's nine twenty-three. So if we want to take a little break, I think we take a break right now so people have time to get ready and then we're ready to go right away at nine thirty if you all come and go with that. Yeah? Okay, perfect. Okay. So do we stop the?
I'm going to go ahead and call me. Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and call the people. All right. Before we get started, can we go ahead and do a roll call just so we know who's in attendance?
Brooke?
Here.
Betty?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Mike Nedler?
Here.
Mike May?
Here.
Oh, we got Mike May. John Robbins?
Here.
Georgia?
Kimberly?
Here.
Hannah, I'm sorry.
I'm here.
All right. Thank you all. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All right. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Two seconds?
Choose your pick. One, can I offer one suggestion if, if the board is comfortable with it? Would you be okay with only the members attending in person making the motions just for a sense of, of consistency? Or do, do you mind? I feel like there's a lag sometime between the online and the in-person. I don't care, but would that be easier for the meeting structure? Is that how?
Are you guys okay with that, the ones who are on Zoom?
That's fair.
Okay.
So we need a second then, right?
A second.
John, John, the John.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? All right. Just in case. All right. Public comment. Do we have any public comment, David?
Good morning, everyone. If you are in attendance and you have something you would like to speak to the board about, there is a raise hand feature in the Zoom software. If you would do so now, we will recognize you and allow you to speak.
There is no public comment.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Doctor's report?
Okay. So to follow up on your question too, Betty, we do have some additional members, guests in the room that I'm going to introduce to you and give them a chance. Well, I'll, I'll give them a chance to introduce themselves to yourself, to you. First of all, we have our new staff attorney who replaced Tom and is Peter Anderson. He's here in the room. Peter, do you want to tell them a little bit about yourself?
Hi, Peter Anderson.
Yeah, I don't think you're on the, you want to, because he, I don't think they can see you.
Oh, yeah.
You want to come? Yeah.
You can do it. I do. Just go stick your face right in front of the camera.
There you go. There you go.
Peter Anderson, new attorney too here at the Department of Education. I'm from the University of Iowa College of Law and just came from a clerkship at the Court of Appeals for Judge John O'Reilly, Vice Warren. So happy to be here. Happy to get to know all of you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Renee German, who is our new legislative liaison. Renee?
Yeah. So Renee German, also new to the Department of Education. Prior to coming here, I was with the Department of Transportation for 21 years, working in their legislative and policy office within that department. So excited to be here. I'm on my fourth week. So I am observing and, and learning lots. So nice to meet you.
Every day she comes back is amazing.
Yes. I would say. We were talking last night and they said, wow, talking last night. And they said, you've been, I said, you've only been here a month. And she's like, oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. It's been, it feels like a year.
Been a lot. There's been a lot going on. It's been a lot.
We do have a new community college bureau chief starting on Friday. Her name is Amy and I think it's Gosecki. So she'll be starting Friday. So when we have our next board meeting, we'll make sure you get a chance to meet her, but let you know she'll be starting this week. We're very excited to have her. An update, if you're not aware, our, our still sort of new CFO, Earl Whipple, had some unexpected major surgery and he is currently out. He is doing well, but he is, will be out for quite some time. And so I just give you an update on that. We wish him the best, but certainly, you know, hope, hope he's doing well too. Just that you're aware, if there's some requests that you're not, that you have questions, we may have to go a different route on that. And then an update on Josh's position. We have been in communication with boards and commissions on getting that position filled. It is currently vacant, but we will certainly let you know if you have any new information on that beforehand.
Do you know when they're going to fill it or?
I don't have a definitive timeline on it, but they've reached out. So I know they're working on that process a little bit. You know, as always, boards and commissions can sometimes be difficult to fill. So if you are, have suggestions of candidates or people you think should be involved, encourage them to, to submit an application, whether it be for this board or other boards, there, it's, it's great work. There's never enough people. So certainly if you have, you know, someone in mind, let us know.
I don't have anyone in mind, but I think it would be helpful if perhaps the next board member came from the southeastern quadrant of the state. We don't have anyone basically south of I-80 or in the southeastern part of the state. So I have no idea what people might be interested there, but I think geographically that would make sense.
Yeah. The ideal, the ideal vision has all the balanced, you know, positions and parts of the state. So absolutely, we'll make a note of that, that that would be the preferred area. I bet. So, so a few, a few updates and then let me know if you have questions. One thing I'll give you an update on is we talked about previously that the waivers that the board, or excuse me, the department grants for schools, when they need permission to be 100% online. Currently, we only have one, just one that's active. Again, those are all available on our website, but we have seen either zero or just this one in the past several weeks. So if you ever want to track that, we can send you that link. Otherwise, it's all available on that COVID website. We are working through the legislative process on several bills and I'm going to let Renee update you on that. I think there's certainly things we want to make sure you're aware of, but now she'll speak a little bit more to you about that. But we're happy to ask you and answer any questions at any time. So I know that's always of, of public interest and they get a lot of attention. So certainly don't ever hesitate to contact us if you have questions or concerns. I am also currently meeting with several legislators just as part of my confirmation process. So I've been having some of those meetings as well, just so that you know, on Monday, I will be introduced to the Senate to, as part of that process. But if there's any other updates on that, I'll be sure to keep you informed.
It's so crazy. It's been like a year.
I know.
I'm like, wait, confirmation?
Confirmation, yeah. Still unofficial. CARES dollars update. I kind of wanted to just give a reminder overview of this because we did get another big allotment and there's potentially more. So I just want to give you an update on all the money that we've received. So again, going back to, we have that document we sent with you, sent to you earlier. We can send you an updated version. The first allotment for Iowa was 71 million for the ESSR dollars. And again, this is for any COVID-related expense, emergency relief for schools. Then we had the 26 million from GEAR that we designated for connectivity. We were able to distribute to schools for either hotspots or paying for service for families who couldn't otherwise afford it. Obviously, the base, the base issue is the broadband infrastructure and that's something certainly beyond the scope. But what we could financially support is a priority of the governor of this session, but we're trying to use the money whatever we can to help mitigate that issue as much as possible, knowing that schools need to be connected and families need to be connected. So through our, our support, we help families and communities also become better connected. That's, that's great for everybody. So we're certainly going to continue to work on that. We did receive that 17.7 million in the VIVAS Reimagine Grant that we're using to prioritize that e-learning central platform. We have sent out the bid request for teachers who will be paid stipends to submit curriculum and content for this platform, which is super exciting. And we had, now I just forgot the number. I'm going to say like 64 teachers apply, which I think is actually quite phenomenal considering the environment we're in right now and that they are eager and interested to take on that additional work. So we'll be, we're excited to see what that process looks like. We'll keep you updated as that moves forward.
So I'm sorry. So that's a, it's a training platform for them to train?
That is a platform for, if you want to offer a course, I want to offer French. And, and I can build this French course that's on this platform and students anywhere across the state can take it and I can teach it as an Iowa licensed teacher in my school. But it opens up to everybody else. So as we use our teachers, I have a teachers to build the content, then we're also creating a, a better opportunity for other, whether it's rural schools or bigger schools that maybe just don't have that specific content area, a way to connect better and help get kids courses they might not otherwise be able to receive.
So it just helps schools reach or need that offer and teach?
Yes.
So if they didn't have it, then they could enroll students in this or something, right?
Absolutely. Yeah. So we're excited about that. Remember, we have kind of the emergency solution where we have to get some of the content out there for this year, but this is, this is meant to extend that because with the extra 17,000, you need to do quite a bit more.
Okay.
So we want to ideally go beyond just the core content to some of the more difficult offered courses and then even try to figure out ways to do some of the most challenging ones, you know, whether it's CTE courses or some of those hard to fill and unique courses. Remember, we have kind of the emergency solution where we have to get some of the content out there for this year, but this is, this is meant to extend that because with the extra 17,000, you need to do quite a bit more.
Okay.
So we want to ideally go beyond just the core content to some of the more difficult offer courses and then even try to figure out ways to do some of the most challenging ones, you know, whether it's CTE courses or some of those hard to fill and unique courses we want kids to have. You know, marine biology, you know, how many people can teach that? But if you had one person somewhere and we knew we had 30 seats every time, how many more kids would have an opportunity to take that class or this platform than they ever would just in their, in their district area? So we're excited about that. So then we just got, yes, Ryan?
I, I just have a quick question. Do we give any priorities or suggestions as to critically needed course content where there's maybe a lack of teachers? Or is this a completely wide open, whatever a teacher wants to submit?
It's sort of, there's two phases on it. So we had to start first with some of the more standard content because of how the platform is built and our capacity to put it in there. But the second wave is going to be exactly what you talk about because we want to know what the most hard to fill ones are. We had a broad stakeholder group that provided inputs on this for need, so that phase two is going to be what you talk about. There's some technical parts of it that force us to be a little more tied down to the core content early on and I won't go into the details as how it's built and how you can provide that content area, knowing that we needed, we had a tight timeline on it. But those will add, those to me are the most needed ones and we want to really make sure we're exploring and giving, offering what schools, schools most want. What kids need.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
Yep. So then we also just received another ESSR allocation of $345 million to go out to schools. And then there was an additional 26 million in something called ENS, which, which we haven't received yet. It's something you have to apply for. Previously, the ESSR dollars had to also be partially allocated to non-public schools for services. In the second round, they separated it. It didn't change what they received, it just changed sort of the mechanism for getting it there because that was a little bit controversial the first time. And then another $11 million in GEAR funds. So we're currently, so that was more than four times more sort of the first batch. And what we're hearing is that there will be a third allocation of up to $130 billion to open schools, which is additional three times more of what this last allocation was. So there is a lot of money coming into the state for education, one-time purposes, but there's a lot of things that we can do with it, a lot of things that schools can do with it to maybe correct some things that they needed to take care of all along. Obviously, there's conditions tied to this money, but it's pretty broad in terms of uses as it's all sort of tied to COVID-related expense. So any, so I just wanted to make you aware of how much money was coming into the state for this and what potential there could be going forward and let you know, you know, if you had any questions.
I had a question about kids with IEPs. So we got an email from someone who had an autistic son and was saying that the Zoom calls were not really working for his son, you know, he's trying to work with a school and IEP plan, but they were not offering in-person services because of COVID-19. And so is, are there any funds or anything going to schools to help kind of ensure that they can still provide services and honor IEP plans or accommodate students in other ways or anything like that? Because I'm sure that would take additional, maybe staff or funding or protections or something like that. So is there anything that's specifically allocated to that? Or is it just coming like generally, schools can kind of do whatever they want or how or something?
Thomas is raising his hand.
One of the allowable purposes and one of the purposes that we're encouraging in the second round of funding is to address learning loss or to accelerate learning. And one of the allowable uses of CARES Act dollars and CARES Act 2.0 is to address the needs of children with disabilities. So, you know, it's a tough situation when I can't be in person for my safety, but in person is the only way that I can receive an appropriate education. We've told schools from the, from the start, you're going to need to make that somehow later.
Okay.
And that somehow later, hopefully, if they're prudent, they'll use CARES Act 2.0 to address.
Okay.
But that's always been an expectation. If you can't do in-person learning right now because of just basic safety, you know, step one in Maslow's hierarchy, you're going to have to figure it out later once the public health emergency's over.
The other thing I'll add too is that with the 10% that we can hold back at the state, we have the ability to maybe leverage a greater level of access just through our capacity. So for example, with the first round, we used that to get the, the cost for refunding the per people seat allotments for the learning platform, whether it was campus, what the school had. For the second allotment, we're looking specifically at that academic support, achievement support for that gap and then social emotional wellbeing. So what can we do with the dollars that we have to help leverage more for the state through those two lenses? I will also add that I was on a meeting just recently with the Homeland Security Advisory Committee talking about concerns with cybersecurity. And I think as we've leveraged greater access onto online platforms for schools, have we properly prepared them for the cybersecurity concerns? Either because we've connected them more in different ways or they've had to move so quickly, they haven't really built up underneath the securities that they need. So also as part of that holdback, can we help partner with that group to get out some different resources to schools to address those concerns? Because those are certainly a real and very heightened concern at this time as well. So that's kind of for us, the considerations for that third group and how we prioritize it. And then certainly within schools, based on their needs, how they can use those funds to make sure there's, there's a lot of needs that are going to need to be met, and so we're using the money the best way to make sure we're taking it.
And can you talk a little bit about, I know that they're rolling out the vaccines for pre-K through 12th, right? Teachers and staffers and staff, correct?
Yep.
So starting of February 1st or?
So on last Friday, Public Health hosted a webinar for school administrators that we helped coordinate and they provided an update on what that process would look like. Again, with, with sort of high-level timelines that are really dependent on allotments, you know, but we have a plan, but you need the doses. All of this will be coordinated through local public health departments with sort of those tiered priorities. But the, the goal of the work was to sort of make them aware what it could look like, making sure you're in communication with your public health and having plans in place of what that would look like for your staff and students. We do expect that to start moving forward here in early February, but again, it will really be tied to when the doses come in and sometimes they don't know that until a week in advance, but that is, that is coming up soon.
Okay. Can you keep us updated, kind of on, I just like, I know, I mean, our March meeting, I mean, it would be nice to know just how many, I don't know if you can keep, I was on like how many teachers are going to vaccinate or how many school districts or I don't really know how they're doing it. Or is that, is that something that data you guys could provide or just?
I, I don't know. Well, let's talk to public, let me see if I can find out from public health if they're tracking it at that level or not.
And are they seeing like a high percentage of teachers wanting to get the vaccine or, because I know in healthcare, they are said they're 60, 70% or something like that. We're okay with getting it, so.
I, I don't think I could report to you any sort of official number on what the response is. I know schools are sending out different requests, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable making any sort of claim of what that looks like. But they are in the process of, of asking their staff of, of interest.
Well, I think it's really exciting that, that they are next up in line. I think they, they need it, so I think that'd be great. And I think that'd be a great effort for, you know, ensuring that schools can stay open, so I think that's awesome.
We could also send you that link because that webinar is recorded and posted on their, on their website. We can probably send it to the board too if you're interested. It has some information on it. If you wanted that, we can do that as well.
Yes, please, thank you.
A couple other sort of internal things, you know, as a department, as we continue to kind of rebuild and focus on our restructuring, kind of reviewing some of our processes as well. One of the things is sort of how we review the internal process for approving contracts. And, you know, I think as we think of our priorities and efficiencies, you know, how we're spending our money, what type of work we're, we're prioritizing is important and we're all come on the same page. And so we've been kind of rebuilding what that looks like and I think that would be good for our overall consistency and how we work together as a department with a common mission, even though we have separate divisions, we all really sort of have the same goal. So aligning that work kind of helps tie that process together better. So I think that's been, we're doing a lot of things. We're trying to get better at a lot of things, but we're trying to just really kind of fine tune some of our work. And having Shane and Amy in these, both of these positions has just been, you know, I, I don't have words for the value that they've added to this work and so I'm grateful for how we're kind of moving forward. But just so you have an update on that too, I believe it's important for us to be very fiscally sound and responsible how we allocate our dollars and doing this process helps us review some of that work in a better way. Also, you know, and we'll continue to provide this and those weekly updates. I'm starting to do some more speaking engagements, which is kind of nice. It's nice to speak to students again and, and future educators again. And then for me, that's sort of a, that's a bright spot in my day that helps me feel re-engaged with the work that I was here to do. So it's not a lot, but there's been a few, so I'll try and keep you posted on those as much as possible. If you have any requests, if you would like me to come to your area or if you think there's a group I should be speaking to, please send those to me or Carol and we'll see what we can do to make that happen. We're also scheduling some student listening tours. I'm very excited about to hear back from them on not only how the pandemic has impacted them, but thoughts on what they want education to look like moving forward. So I'm looking forward to that as well. And then last, an update on Davenport. I sent you that notice that they did hire TJ on Monday night as their, their contract hired superintendent. They will all be here today, not all. TJ and the two, the board chair and vice chair to update you on their, on their progress. But just wanted to make sure, we wanted you to be aware of that since it was in the news, that we were aware of it and you'll have opportunity to ask some more questions here today.
Did they hire, they, they were looking for a CEO?
They have, they have offered, they have hired the CFO. The person has not started yet and I think they'll, they'll give you an update on that today, but they have made the offer that has been accepted, so that position will be filled here shortly, which is a very good thing as well.
Awesome.
Yep.
Great.
So those student listening tours, could I get updates on how those go? Absolutely. You bet.
Awesome.
That's all I have unless there's more questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Really smiling group today.
Okay.
I think I'm the one asking questions.
It's just a thorough report of all.
All right, you have one.
Good answer, John, thanks.
All right, legislative update. Come on up. Ryan. You, you want to sit here?
Yes.
And then they can kind of see you.
Okay. Okay, so great.
John's in the board. Sorry.
I'm glad to be with you this morning. Again, my name is Renee German and I'm the legislative liaison for the Department of Education. Like I said before, I was with the Department of Transportation for 21 years. So excited to be here. I just want to go over a little bit of the capital protocols that are going on. Of course, it's very different than years past. For Senate Subcommittee Meetings, those are all online via Zoom. So if you have interest in any of those meetings, you can attend online. You can ask questions online. So that's very nice for the engagement. For the House, you can observe the meetings online through what they're using as WebEx for their online service and to present for our House sub, you do need to be present. Both do have areas of where written comments can also be submitted, so just a little bit of what's going on there. And also it's very quiet over there. It's very different than years past. So I just want to go really quickly over our bills. We have two policy bills. One is a senior year plus proficiency requirement bill. Requires a student to have demonstrated proficiency in reading, math, and science as evidenced by achievement scores on the latest administration of the statewide assessment. If a student is not proficient in one or more of the content areas, they can demonstrate proficiency through measures of college readiness jointly agreed upon by the school board and the post-secondary institution and by other qualifying measures that may be established by the local school boards. So that is our, our one policy bill is working through. The second one is open enrollment tuition following the student. So this one is looking at resolving an issue that occurs when a student is open enrolled, moves to a different district prior to count date and continues their open enrollment. So the bill language just changes first district of resident to the district that counts the student in its certified enrollment and ensures that the bill district is the one that receives the funding for the student. So those are two.
And can I interrupt? Are they, are they going to be rolling a couple of our open enrollment bills? I think maybe our policy one and our technical corrections into some other legislation that legislators are putting forth. So I think we can skip our open enrollment ones just because they might not end up being ours in the.
True, true. And then the remainder of our bills are just technical corrections. I'll just go over the title real quick. Like you said, the open enrollment, there's a child development assistant, duplicate duties, just looking at, just so we'll clean up there. Programs that risk children allowing area education A- agencies to provide technical assistance to shared visions grantees that are not school districts. So currently they're limited to serving only districts. This expands the AA's ability to support quality programming and updates. Outdated language. And then there's eliminates nonprofit school organization report to the department. Just removes a requirement that the districts report expenditure made by the school district on behalf of a certain nonprofit school organization to the department and the department to include information in the report. So just removing that reporting requirement. And then also duties and powers of the AA, the ESSR dollar threshold for AA capital projects, requiring State Board of Education to pay approval from 25,000 to 70,000. And that was simply because just inflation purposes with that. And we're also hearing there, there might be another bill that will deal with this too. So we're looking for that, that we provide more flexibility. And the last one is funding for special programs and updating just the method of calculation. So this one is aligns the current automated calculation process used by the department. Currently, the statute relating to the funding for special programs includes an outdated calculation method, which requires a manual calculation by district. So what this bill does is put the same method into place, but just have it automatic instead of by manual process. So that really quickly is our bill package.
And, and all of our bills have been put forth. We have gotten information from the Senate asking us to kind of do a Sophie's Choice of which would be our bills that we want to for sure pass and which one are we okay about having them be left behind because of time factors?
Right, right.
We'll see how that all works out.
Yep.
What is the role that like we as board members can play in legislation? Is it all like we do separately from our position? Because I'm seeing a lot of board, like a lot of bills coming up in these emails that I, like, that I know will hurt students at schools. And so is that something that I would do outside of my role or how does the Board of Education work with that?
Well, I think that in terms of, you know, we can't really act as lobbies and Thomas correct me if I'm wrong. So in terms of, and that, but also I think that from a board member standpoint, I think that if there's anything that, I mean, you of course, as a constituent can obviously go to your legislators, but that wouldn't be representing the State Board of Education, right? Because we, I think we have to, as board members, we have to speak as kind of a collective voice. So we, if we don't all agree on it, then I feel like we can't all be going off and, you know, doing different things in different areas saying this is, I'm doing this on behalf of the State Board. But you as, you know, a constituent voting, you know, you can, you can always go and talk to your own legislators, talking to legislators that you want about specific things. But I think if it comes from the State Board, I think that we can play like an advocacy role. We can't be lobbies, like we're not registered lobbyists or anything like that. But if there's something that, you know, we, we, we think that and it pertains to the work that we do, I think that we could definitely, you know, maybe talk to the Chair of Education Committee on the Senate or House side. Yeah, so is that okay, Alex?
Yeah, you know, the, your, your capacity as an individual board member is an individual versus a representative of a larger collective. Mr. Nedler and I had a sidebar conversation about another matter where he might contact his legislative, which is fine as a private citizen, but a collective position requires collective action.
Okay.
So. Can't tell you what opinions to hold as a private citizen.
Or if you have other groups that you're affiliated with, like student groups or something like that, that, you know, then you can, maybe you guys together as a group of, you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure like there were any restrictions on what I could.
You just want to sign your name. Yeah, I must stay board member next to.
Yeah.
Okay, exactly. Just put your name.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other legislative questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the welcome.
Thank you.
First one.
All right, now we can move to the consent agenda. All right, so can I get, oh, is this all? Can I get a motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved, John Robbins.
A second.
All right, it's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, opposed? All right, the motion's here, ace. Great, rules, lots and lots of rules.
All right. We're still working through the backlog.
We're still working through the backlog from our pause on rulemaking in November, or it's last March, and we're catching up with some rules changes from the last legislative session. I'll be very brief on the first three or the first three, which are technical and administrative in nature. The first is chapter one, tab D in your board packet. And it would accurately describe how Director Lebo has reorganized his department, renaming the divisions, making clear the internal organizational structure, and changing some outdated proper names. And with that, I'm open to questions about amendments to chapter one, tab D in your board book.
Need a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Sure, John Robbins.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
A motion carries. That was an aye, right?
That was an aye.
Okay.
The next is tab E in your agenda, in your board book, chapter two, petitions for rulemaking and agency procedure for rulemaking. This particular rule package is in light of House File 2389, which made updates to the Administrative Procedure Act. This rulemaking aligns with that recent act and also includes some changes from prior legislative sessions, which we had not incorporated about jobs impact statements and other required elements of rules. But primarily this is to align with a requirement from last legislative session. So I am open to any questions, comments, or concerns about chapter two, tab E amendments.
The agency refers to the Department of Ed.
Just one.
Are the, sorry. I was just going to ask other major stakeholders and constituent groups that are going to be surveyed or sought for information. Are those AEA, school districts, community colleges? Is that who we're talking about there? And professional organizations such as School Administrators of Iowa, Association of School Boards, the two labor groups, ISEA, Professional Educators. All right, thank you. College trustees, so the folks who are usually involved in our, in the pre-planning of any policy change. Thank you.
I was just going to add on the, maybe just to clarify my suggestion on the motions being, and just in the room, we do still need to hear your voice on the, after the motion, if you approve or not. So we would like you to unmute. I decided we'd streamline the process at the motion in a second in the room. So please, please let us hear you on the vote.
Was there a motion?
No, not, there was not yet.
No. I'm on, on 2.122, second paragraph. Can you kind of comment on why that change is being made?
Well, on page four.
Yes.
Okay. This is in specific response to rulemaking by like the Architecture Examiners Board or the Board of Public Safety where they would adopt by reference technical materials that were behind paywalls or that you had to be a member to access. So members of the public prior to this would have to like log on and give a credit card number to access a rule. So that's why this language was put into the statute and we're adopting it so that if we incorporate anything that's behind the paywall, we have to have a paper copy or some other way where the public can access it for free. So that's the purpose of that change.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess another one, 2.183 on page four. That whole paragraph appears to be a change, am I correct? So the question is, why the date, July 1st, 2012? I don't, I don't understand that if that's a proposed change.
It's adding in language that should have been added in before in response to an executive order and prior language. The reason I included the date was to make sure that there was at least a benchmark for that five-year cycle.
Okay.
So it starts on that.
So, so that we have like 2017, 2022, 2027. So that it's clear what the cycle is, what the starting date for that five-year cycle is. We're doing that already as a matter of practice. It's just codifying that date so that the cycle is clear.
All right, the date kind of threw me off. I guess another question. Under 2.181 or 2.1817A, that whole section is new, is that correct? Because it says amend the rule as follows, so that's all new?
Petition for rulemaking, what it does is add a new sub-rule before this rule is undivided. And just, it adds, since we're adding content to it, 2.18 sub-1 is, breaks it into sub-rules. And then 2.18, so everything, like bottom of page five and the top of page six is status quo other than making it a sub-rule. And then 2.182 is new content.
Okay. So the form is not being changed?
The form is not being changed. The only thing added to the form is making it a sub-rule.
Okay.
You're just breaking it out to make it clear?
Yes.
Well, I'm just a little confused by the numbering, I guess, but I guess is what it is. You have a 2.17, 2.1817A. And then you have a 2.1917A.
So 17A is a reference to another administrative rule, right?
Well, in the style of the administrative rules, anything in that parentheses at the top heading, the rule number itself, is a reference to the enabling Iowa Code Chapter. So Iowa Code Chapter 17A is the Administrative Procedure Act, which this rule implements.
Thank you.
Pretty good to go, Mike?
All good.
It's a little confusing, I know.
I'll make a recommendation to approve the changes in chapter two.
I would second.
All right, so move to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everyone? I heard.
Any ayes?
Anyone, any, anyone opposed? Oh.
I heard more voices.
Should I say to get that muted and then? Okay, all right. Motion carries.
So the next rule before you is sub, chapter four, waivers from administrative rules, tab F in your board book. This is again a follow-up to House File 2389, which modernized the Administrative Procedure Act last session. This rulemaking does a couple of things. It strikes the word variance from the rules because variance was stricken from the underlying statute. So there's, and waivers and variances were the same thing, so why call them different things? So it simplifies, simplifies the vocabulary. The next major change is on the bottom of page four. Right now, we have to make publicly available orders granting waivers. This adds in we have to make publicly available orders denying waivers, which we do already as a matter of course on our website, but this, that just codifies the requirement. And the, the content on the top of page, on page five, basically directs the department to make available through the administrative code editor waivers and variances so that, waivers, so that waivers aren't secret. So if I go to the adminis, the code editor's website, I should be able to check when I look at a rule, whether or not there's been any waivers granted to it. The bottom line is to, A, simplify vocabulary and B, make the waiver process more publicly accessible.
I would move to approve. I will second.
Then move to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, opposed? All right, motion carries. Mike and John, looks like you guys are going to be busy today.
Yeah, I just thought about this.
Yeah, like you go back and you're like, dude, that's John, like, okay.
We get overruled, babe, if you don't like that.
We get out of rhythm.
They might not want you by the end of the day.
And just, just point of clarification. I don't want something to die for lack of a second if there's somebody out on Zoom who would like to second it. So I don't want to take away Mike Lynn John's ability to not second. So if that, you know, so if that, if that situation arises, I would prefer that it be opened up to Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
So that our efficiency doesn't override the process.
Also, just if you're on Zoom, make sure you're unmuting yourself when you're voting because I think we're hearing maybe one or two ayes and I feel like there are more. I just, I can see three of you and I think my bay is on the phone, so.
I hear you clear. I hear you clearly. Thanks, guys. Yeah, I'll be there.
Yeah, so just make sure you're unmuted when you, when you say aye or aye. Okay, thank you. All right, so goodbye.
Next, or next rule, item eight, tab G in your agenda is an update to open enrollment. There's two root causes or root rationales for these amendments. The first is to conform to legislative action last session about catch case load and class size limits for children with disabilities. The language that was replaced in Iowa Code was very dated. It was adopted in the 1980s. And the words to describe and the way special education was delivered was much different than it is now. Special education was the room at the end of the hall rather than a service. So this is updating class size and case load limits so that it more aligns with A, legislation and B, current practice. The second change in, to chapter 17A is dispute resolution. So if there is a dispute regarding whether or not a receiving district has an appropriate program, the current rules require the AIA Director of Special Education to resolve that. Federal law would require that the IEP team resolve that and then there are procedural safeguards available to the parents through appeals or state complaints or mediation. So this gets the AIA Director out of a business that cheer he really shouldn't be in of approving, approving open enrollment applications in and puts it back where it should be on the child's IEP team who knows the child the best. So those are the, and then preempting, trying to preempt Mike's question, Mike Nedler's questions, it's just renumbering sub-rules on page five.
That's why it's underlined?
Yes, because it's adding in a new, it's adding in some, some rules.
What tomorrow's going to miss?
He anticipated your question.
But I do have one question if you're done. Under finance, I think it's one, two, three, fourth line. Can you talk to the statement that says the responsibility for ensuring that an appropriate program is maintained for an open enrollment special, ed students shall rest with the resident district? So the resident district isn't providing the services, is that correct?
The resident district isn't providing the service. The resident district is paying for it. The resident district, since it's paying for it through open enrollment finance, that's the, the resident district is the safety valve.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'll recommend approval.
I will second.
Okay, you guys switch it up, thank you. All right, so move to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Next rule on your agenda, agenda number nine, tab H, is an update to the chapter 48, workplace learning. This is a requirement from last session's future ready Iowa bill, House File 2629, which required the department to establish a process to approve state recognized workplace learning programs, which would be usable for some of the, which would be eligible for some of the funding created by the future ready Iowa bill. It does a couple of things. It strikes the title of the chapter so that the chapter is broader and divides the chapter into two divisions. The first, the division that currently exists, which is rules one through four. And then the second is a new division which establishes this, this rule and aligns it with the last dollar scholarship program. My colleague Jeremy Varner, who actually knows what he's talking about, if he's on the line, can answer any technical questions, but I can assure you that this is basically a drag and drop from, through required legislation. So if Jeremy has any corrections and he's on the line or Eric Sinclair has any corrections and they're on this, he's on the Zoom, feel free to correct my misinformation or my fake news.
Okay.
Is Jeremy there?
Jeremy? All is there is on the screen?
No, because it shows seven on the bottom. Remember my rule.
Oh, okay, I see, okay.
Okay, do you have any questions for Jeremy?
Well, I just, I asked this question at a community college council meeting and now I've forgotten the exact wording, terminology, but under the apprentice programs, that refers to both types of apprentice programs and they're currently in, starting the industry approved apprentice programs.
Correct.
So, so just so everyone knows that it's, it really incorporates two kinds of apprentice programs.
Correct.
Yes. I would move to adopt chapter 48.
I will second.
Been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 That's good, thank you, guys. Hey, motion carries.
The next rule, chapter 60, tab I, agenda item 10, and an update to chapter 60. Long overdue update to chapter 60. You can see the implemented code sections 2013, 2014. What, the language in here is a drag and drop from those prior code sections. What does, the, the key thing it does is expands the eligibility for supplementary waiting because I'm in, because of English learner status from four years to five years. That status quo already, that's, the finance team has done that in the system already. This is just catching the rule up to a statute that's old enough to enter first rate. And then the second portion is updating a later statute which says that those five years need not be consecutive. So if I stage in and out, if I'm proficient, if I fall on either line of the proficiency standard, those five years don't, don't have to be consecutive. If I leave school and return to school. I continue to be eligible for the rest of my five years. So Tom Cooley, if he's on the line, he can correct anything that I've said, but this is largely conforming to present, to current practice that the finance team is already implementing.
Is Tom on?
Tom is not here.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll recommend approval of chapter sixty as presented. I'll second.
Alright, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, Mike.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, opposed? Alright, the motion carries.
The last rule, chapter ninety-eight, item eleven, tab J in your board book, updates the chapter on categorical funding. Normally, I don't presume to speak school finance, but I think I can handle this one. It changes the name of a fund. The fund was changed in statute to align with current governmental accounting practices. Since the fund name was changed in statute, the rule is incorporating that statutory change. So changing agency funds to custodial funds to make more clear to the public what this is. I mean, an attorney hears the word agency and knows what that means, an accountant hears that term and knows what it means, but the public might not. Custodial is a little bit clearer, that I'm holding this in custody for somebody. I'm holding this in custody for some other group.
Question on that one. When it talks about what the custodial funds may include, I don't see any reference to student organizations. Are they part of the custodial funds part of this?
I don't know, because it renamed it only. And that's the only thing that the statute requires. I could find that out for you.
I'd be interested, I'd be interested, because I think most schools do hold student organizational funds in some capacity. I just didn't know if it was, uh, the other rules.
Yeah. We could find that. I'll find that out for you.
Okay. I would move that we give notice to change chapter ninety-eight. I will second that.
Alright, it's been moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Right, opposed? Alright, the motion carries.
Alright. We have five decisions, proposed decisions before you. Four involving open enrollment, one involving educational placement. They're in your, all five of them are in one tab, tab K. For David Kennedy's benefit, there are two where the party has appealed and the board has granted brief oral argument, five minutes per side. We, David, when those particular appeals come up, I will tell you who to unmute if they are on the line. The first is RN versus CAM Community School District. Decision number five-one-two-one. It involves a CAM resident who wishes to attend the the children to attend the Iowa Connections Academy. It's an online provider housed and affiliated with CAM. They're CAM residents wishing to open enroll to the Iowa Connections Academy. The reason given in the application was we have people, we have a child who is at risk of COVID-19. Viewing this through the open enrollment lens, open enrollment would required under serious health conditions. One of the factors is it's necessary for me, it's necessary to address the serious health condition. Here, the online academy that CAM maintains, the online program that CAM has put together in-house addresses that risk just as well as the Connections Academy. They're equally remote. There may be questions about quality, which the parents raise through counsel. But there was no evidence that one was preferable over the other in addressing the child's asthma. So if, the alternate grounds raised by the parent in this case was an attendance center change. Multi-district type, districts with multiple high schools. So I want to move from Davenport North to Davenport Central. And the scope of review for the state board in that case is abusive discretion. The board by statute has discretion to assign, assign particular school, students to particular schools. They felt that allowing a family to choose CAM outside of the open enrollment process, one of their resident families to choose CAM outside of the open enrollment process would have been disruptive to their planning and issues regarding staffing. So that was the rationale for not approving this transfer under the transfer model or under the student assignment model. So under either theory advanced by the family, open enrollment, there's no serious health condition standard, standard six is not met because CAM and CAM in-house and the Connections Academy equally addressed the child's asthma. And then voluntary student transfer, change of attendance center, change of building. The district had a, the, the family did not rebut the reasonableness of the district's rationale that this would be disruptive to our staffing. And so my recommendation is the board affirm the decision made by the CAM School Board on September fourteenth, twenty twenty.
I don't know if this was even discussed, but it struck me as kind of strange. If they already have an online format, why did they create, create a separate online format for this student? Why? Maybe it's irrelevant, I don't know. Why was that student just put into the online platform that they had?
Well, the online platform they had is a private provider and it's a, they were required to scale up online options for all students, including students that did not select this private provider. So every district was required to, to create something in-house.
Okay, thank you.
And that was a requirement of Senate File twenty-three ten.
Are there any other questions? Oh, is there a motion?
I move that we affirm the decision in the open enrollment RN at all CAM Community School District.
Yep, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I will second.
Alright, it's been moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, the motion carries.
The next is decision five-one-two-three SB at all versus CAM Community School District. Similar facts, the only difference is it was a household member versus a child, an adult caretaker in the house who is at elevated risk of COVID-19. Similar decision set. The enrollment in the CAM provided versus the Connections Academy provided equally protected the family member from risk of COVID-19. And then voluntary transfer or the attendance center policy, you know, similar facts, similar rationale. The, the, the legal arguments were the same. The only factual difference was it was a household member versus a child itself. Granted, when I was presiding over this, I granted extensive latitude because of Senate File twenty-three ten to include family members. Ordinarily, open enrollment law would not include family members. It's risk to the child. So I gave some latitude and, to the parties and analyzed this as if it were a risk to the child themselves versus a family member. So that is the only factual difference between the two. The legal analysis and the legal argument are the same. Gave some latitude to the family because it's a family member versus a child. I've reached the same outcome because of standard six.
Are there any questions?
I'll recommend that the state board approve the proposed decision. Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, opposed?
And I, I'd just like to exercise the presiding judge's prerogative to recognize how well these two cases were tried by the attorneys. I thought that the attorneys for the family did an exceptional job of preparing and advocating and it was very easy for me to follow their argument. They were well made. So even though they weren't ultimately successful, I thought that the school district's attorney was well-prepared, the family's attorney in each case was well-prepared and I just want the, want the board to know that I benefited as the presiding officer from some exceptional lawyering in front of me. So the next case, MW. And this is one where the board has granted brief oral argument. So if David, if, I'm gonna take the mask off, so I'm clear. Michelle Wegner, if she's on the line, Miriam Van Huclum for the district or any other district representative, if they could be unmuted. The before they're prepared to speak, I'll give my brief summary. This is a question where the family's allegation did not fit within either of the two jurisdictional grounds for the state board to hear an appeal, an open enrollment appeal. The, the crux of this allegation was Des Moines is not following the substantive law. Des Moines is not providing at least fifty percent in-person. Des Moines is acting without an approved waiver. Please allow me to open and roll out. I considered that as, when I was analyzing the law and the facts. And again, similar to last, the last case that we discussed, I was prepared to give latitude on the substance. But I did not feel that I could give latitude regarding jurisdiction. Even in times of crisis, this board has jurisdiction only that the legislature grants it. It granted some additional authority in Senate File twenty-three ten for late filed open enrollment for a period, for that two-week period. But I did not see convincing statutory evidence that the board had jurisdiction over this. That Senate File twenty-three ten did not expand the board's ability to hear this. For that reason, I recommend dismissal and the family can seek recourse in state district court. And with that, I will yield, defer this matter to the board chair for five minutes of oral argument for each side, including your questions as the chair has previously ordered. So David, are there parties or counsel or appeal five-one-two-eight who have connected by Zoom?
We have both Michelle and Miriam available online.
Hey, Michelle.
Hi there. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
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 Hi, hi. First, I just wanted to thank Thomas Mays because, sorry, I'm just nervous. He was very gracious to me. I did not have a lawyer. I represented myself. This is all very new territory for me. I've learned that I still have a lot to learn. I have three kiddos and, you know, with Senate File twenty-three ten, requiring in-person instruction and Des Moines deciding not to follow that, I open enrolled all three of them. One was successful, the other two were not, so very sad. They're split up. We're going in two different directions. By the time my kids started at Des Moines briefly, my youngest had already been in school for nine weeks. Indianola has not applied for any waivers. She's gone five days a week, every day. She's absolutely thriving. You know what's to be said about Des Moines Public Schools. Cheryl had sent over some information. I was reviewing it all. There was a link I saw that said, you know, here you can review previous cases similar to yours. So I did that and I thought, oh my gosh, mine isn't about a health need or harassment. Like, I need to find out how I can get this dismissed. And then within, I would say, that same twenty-four hours, I got my notice of hearing. I think I got it on October fourteenth and October fifteenth. And it said, matters asserted. It said, these two statutes and also the state board may take into consideration the effects of Senate File twenty-three ten in this matter. And so I just truly believe that that meant that, hey, we can take that into account here. So just trying to do what's best for my kids and really all the kids in the district. I'm excited to see the new laws coming through. And again, I just wanted to thank Thomas for being so gracious with me as I represented myself. And thank you all for letting me speak today.
Yeah? Is it Miriam? Miriam Van Huclum is on?
Yep, Miriam Van Huclum. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity for oral argument. I would just reiterate that this is a jurisdictional question where the legislature has conferred specific jurisdiction to the State Board of Education on open enrollment appeals in certain areas and not in others. And this current appeal does not fall within the State Board of Education's jurisdiction. So we would ask that the proposed decision be affirmed by the state board. Thank you.
I briefly wanted to mention the hearing notice, including the, including Senate File twenty-three ten as potentially influen-, influencing the outcome. The reason that that was included in the hearing notice was in case as I was directed to liberally construe the law, in case I could construe it broad enough to encompass this, broad enough so that there would be jurisdiction, I considered that at length and found that there was none. So was not trying to mislead anybody by the hearing notice, but the hearing notice was to encompass all potential issues, not to necessarily confer jurisdiction where there was none.
Specifically, what does Senate File twenty-three ten, is there a specific reference to the board in regard to these matters? And if so, what is that very specific reference?
The very specific reference to open enrollment is a two-week period where it was health conditions in, with the child, the family, caretakers, that makes the child at risk of COVID-19. They could, they could expand that. And since the hearing, since the appeal itself referenced the MPS's noncompliance with Senate File twenty-three ten, the fact that they were not primero, that they were more than fifty percent remote without an approved waiver. I, I gave, I gave that, I gave that great weight, but jurisdictional hurdle first. That it did not, the Senate File twenty-three ten did not expand the board's jurisdiction for open enrollment, other than that, that brief two-week window.
Are there any other questions?
Why did one student get to open, open a role and the other two didn't?
I'm sorry? Can you, you kind of cut out in the beginning. I couldn't hear you.
Dr. Wayne, because the, if I heard the question correctly is why were the, why were the sibling groups? is why were the, why were the sibling groups split?
Yes.
And why was, because the child timely opened and enrolled to enter kindergarten. That date to enter kindergarten is September 1st. And that, that is an unfortunate artifact of the statute that sometimes that March 1st versus September 1st deadline results in sibling groups being split. But that's an artifact of two different timelines.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
While I sympathize with the, the parent, I feel that the state board does not have jurisdiction in this matter. And I approve, I recommend that we approve the proposed decision, finding no jurisdiction.
I agree with the comments and I would second.
All right, it's been moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Michelle and Miriam.
Thank you.
Can I ask just a question, a rhetorical one unrelated to what we just decided? Let, let's, let's say that we as a board of, State Board of Education take to heart what Thomas has said about jurisdictional impediments. Do we ever, would we ever say, gee, you know, maybe the legislature should relook at this and the different grounds? You know, for example, the, the family member COVID situation that we just heard a little bit ago versus the, the student or, or, you know, anything. You know, if you see, if you start to see a bunch of decisions, is that our, is that part of our role or is that not part of our role? I mean, I, I don't disagree with the decisions. We have to follow what the law is. But if we collectively have a thought about what the law is, can we share that? That what the law should be?
Brian, I think you can through the board's policy setting prerogative, recommendations to the department. This legislation, limiting it to serious health condition and bullying and harassment originated from the department and the board. Prior to that, what, prior to that legislation around 2006, any open enrollment appeal could come to the department regardless of, regardless of grounds. And the board recommended that the department, that there are so many appeals, we want to restrict them to, to, to particular types. So if the board recommends to the department, either directly or indirectly, to reconsider that for next legislative sessions, that's certainly within your prerogative. But the, the restriction to these two jurisdictional grounds were made by, that recommendation was made by your predecessors simply based on the volume of open enrollment appeals to the point that there was a full-time ALJ that heard only open enrollment appeals.
Got it, thanks for the historical context.
And this is something I think we've talked about because we, you know, in the past had some issues with the bullying and harassment, the kind of the standards. And, and so I think we've talked about kind of, you know, what we could do to kind of, you know, go into the legislature and asking that, you know, the, the factors that they consider as standards that they consider to be changed. But I think that before any changes like that are made or anything like that, I think that's definitely something that we can discuss. But I think that we'd want to maybe also look to other state boards of education to see kind of what kind of appeals they hear. Because you don't want to have our state board meetings completely, you know, taken over by appeals. That's not what we're here to do. So, you know, that's something that, and other state boards, you know, don't even hear appeals, some hear, you know. So I think that it would be a good thing to maybe look at other state boards in other states and see kind of how they handle appeals and things before we kind of make up our minds on what we want to do. But that's a conversation that we could have over, you know, the course of a year or two, inside, you know, what we want to do. But that's definitely something we've talked about in the past, so.
There's so much with open enrollment right now that's going on at the legislature. I think it'd be good for our, our work session, whenever it happens, is that we can spend some time on, on legislation and the things that we should be advocating. And I'm not sure where this open enrollment's going to go with this session, but this may give us some more food for thought.
I, I have a follow-up question. So if the board decided something in this area, whatever, I don't know what it might be, and the department doesn't want to go forward with it. I mean, do we have the authority to, want of a better word, require the department to do something? Or does it just end with the director? Or the department, however you want to define that?
The, the state board is an independent body. You all are Senate confirmed, so, as well as the director. So you're an independent body. If you take a position different from the department, hopefully that wouldn't happen because we're, board department relationship is not even adversarial at all compared to other states.
Yep.
But, you know, the, were it to hap, feel it's unlikely, but were it to happen, you have your own independent authority to make recommendations to the legislature that might differ, differ from the department's recommendations. So I don't want to diminish, say that you don't have that authority. I just think that we try, the legislative team would try. It's very drastic, it's your concerns.
So the department often entered, or sends legislation to the legislature. Further question would be, can the state board by itself send legislation to the legislature?
By itself, you're an independent body.
So we do.
But I think we would need to work with the legislative team to talk about mechanics.
Oh, okay.
So it would be clear who is speaking on behalf of who, like, assuming that there's a divergence in priority, we'd want to make clear that this is a department bill versus a state board bill, a department amendment versus a state board amendment.
Okay.
Anything to add, Shan or Renee's left there?
Yeah, and because the other component is, is any time that you propose legislation, then you have to ensure that it gets assigned to a legislator. And then when it is scheduled for a subcommittee, you have to go to the subcommittee and then present the bill at the time of the subcommittee. So there's a lot of mechanics that go with it as it works its way through the legislative process.
And then of us are, you know, like, at least for this state board, you know, we don't have like a registered lobbyist or anything.
Right, you need to have.
You know, like to track the legislation or to lobby on every path, right?
Right, because you need to register on the bill and then yes.
So you'd have to probably go through the department. You know, Renee would probably have to.
So I agree with Thomas, I can't see this happening. But we could, we could do this process if the board, if the board felt strongly enough about it. But the, we'd have to follow the same process that the department follows when they introduce legislation.
But I think that what Thomas is trying to say is that we should probably, I mean, I think that, I don't see, I mean, I guess her, I, I think that it would be beneficial to everyone if we, if we decide to do something like this, if we work with the department on it.
Absolutely.
And people are happy, you know, something that everyone was happy with so that they, you know, if we decide to do that. But yeah, you're right, if, if we, if there was a difference or something like that, you know, an opinion or something, yeah.
So you, you as a board have the authority committed to you by the legislature in 2567. So anything that is within that scope that you've, I don't want to diminish your power, independent of the department, but it works better when the department and the board are on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And then.
I liked, I liked John's suggestion that we actually schedule some time for discussion on this as a board. Maybe that's not appropriate right now because we're behind schedule. But I, I like the idea of having some time to be able to discuss it, discuss it as John mentioned.
I think this would be something that would be good because this probably is, we want to delve deeper into this. I think this is probably one of those things that we could probably, you know, discuss during the retreat as well.
So in the interest of time, because we have one more set of folks who might be presenting oral argument on the last appeal. The next appeal in tab K is packet number 5132, open enrollment regarding AN concerning Iowa City Community School District. This is another one where there is a jurisdictional defect. The reason the family wanted to open and roll out was difficulty in accessing tech. And there was quite a bit of record made, quite a bit of testimony and exhibits about what, what the problems were, what Iowa City was doing to address that. But at the end of the day, we're limited, the I as an ALJ and you as a state board are limited to two grounds. They didn't, there was no evidence that fit into either of those two grounds. No health condition, no bullying harassment. And so no doubt that the family has some concerns. But it goes to a question of power of this board to give them a request.
Does the UN have any questions?
We can understand the frustration here, but I would move that we accept the recommendation involving open enrollment of AN at all at Iowa City Community School District.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Hi, this is David. Before you go to the next item, I just wanted to let you know I'm going to have to go offline and Amy has graciously volunteered to continue to moderate for you. I apologize for the interruption.
Thank you.